That's why they're extending time and they even changing rules.
He's got to face at least three batters. There's still a lot of pitching changes. Less possibly.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special North Platte City Council meeting here on Tuesday, October 29th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Of course, we're here in the city council chambers. Calling the meeting officially to order. Angie, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Mr. Rieker did let me know he probably was not going to make it tonight. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of St. Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Did want to mention, thank you all for being here this week in this special meeting. We're doing this to get a couple of things done to assist in the sustainable beef project. And also I think that it's probably appropriate for us to have a fairly short meeting on election day next week. And so I'm hoping that we'll have a very small agenda at that point. We do have one public hearing and likely a couple of other things, but we should plan to have a very short agenda next week. Unless something strange happens in the next five days, which is unlikely. Okay. Item number one is pulled from the agenda. Item number two, award bid to Level LLC of North Platte in the amount of $741,137.90 and authorize the mayor to sign contract for paving district number eight, three, eight, located on Golden Road from Newberry Access East approximately 2,600 feet.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the bid for paving district number eight, three, eight to Level LLC of North Platte in the amount of $741,137.90. Authorize the mayor to sign the contract as presented in the council materials.
Second.
Motion by Luca, second by Vols. Any discussion on item number two? Seeing none, calling the question on item number two, please. Item number two is passed. Item number three, adopt the recommendation by the, by the city planning commission for preliminary and final approval of Sand Hill's mixed use administrative subdivision and a variance to the city code of ordinances, section 155 dot zero nine, three D to allow the depth of a lot to exceed three times the width located at 1105 South Dewey.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the recommendation by the city planning commission for preliminary and final approval of Sand Hill's mixed use administrative subdivision and a variance to the city code of ordinances, section 155 point zero nine, three D to allow the depth of lot to exceed three times the width.
Second.
Motion by Flanders, second by Garrick. Do we? Judy, tell us what we're doing here, please.
Mayor, council. So this property is in the mall property. And it's the lot where Arby's is. There's a lot right to the south of that. So they're combining those lots together. And then there's this little kind of a panhandle where a sign is right. It would be west of, I think, the Habitat reclaim office or whatever that is, is there. It's a, it's a very tiny lot. And so in order to create that lot, that's where the variance comes in is for that 20 by 90 foot lot. The applicants have been made aware that that lot is unbuildable in the future. It does have an existing sign on there which would be allowed to stay. But that's what we're doing essentially creating two, two lots.
Thank you. Any questions for Judy while she's here? Go ahead, Mark.
Can they put up more signage if they need later on?
Um, that would be a question for the future, and I did explain that to them also. The current sign that is there is fine. They can reface some of it. But in the future, they may not be able to tear that sign down and rebuild. It would depend on what the codes say in that area.
Other questions or comments, Mr. Lucas?
I realize this is just pretty administrative, but my employer has been so involved with this project. I'd just prefer to remove myself from voting if that's okay with you.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number three. Item number three is passed. Item number four, adopt the recommendation by the city planning commission for preliminary and final approval of Murphy Tractor First replat located at 3402 South Jeffers Street.
I move to adopt the recommendation by the city planning commission for preliminary and final approval of Murphy Tractor First replat.
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by Garrick. Judy, should I just ask you to stay? I'm sorry. Give us a quick blurb on what's going on here, please.
So this is the Murphy Tractor lot. They owned all four of those lots. The two south lots were originally existing. And then the larger lot to the north, they split off that lot two. And that's just going to open that up for development. The other thing that's happening with this plat is the dedicated road right away on the front. So it'll connect all the way to tractor supply.
Any questions, anyone? While Judy's up here? Ty?
Judy, just to remind me, and I realized this was part of the redevelopment project, but so they're, they're finishing that frontage road and then dedicating that to the city. Is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for Judy? Okay. Any further discussion on item number four? Seeing none, calling the question on item number four, please. Item number four is passed. Item number five, third reading in action on to adopt ordinance number 4180 to amend the city of North Platte code of ordinances to add solar farms under supplementary regulations by adding section 156, 313 Commercial Solar Conversion Systems, CSCS Regulations Solar Farms. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 4180, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, amending chapter 156 zoning supplementary regulations, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4180 to amend the city of North Platte code of ordinances to add solar farms under supplementary regulations by adding section 156.313 Commercial Solar Conversion Systems, section 156 point three, one, three, commercial solar conversion systems, CSCS regulations, solar farms on final reading.
Second.
Motion by Flanders, second by Garrick. Any discussion on item number five? Donna?
Thank you. How does this mesh with the county ordinances? Is this supposed to be in the two mile jurisdiction or is, are we talking about right in the city limits, solar farms?
Both. So when we do a regulation for zoning, it is within the city limits and within the two mile ETJ of the city of North Platte. And how it meshes with the county right now, it doesn't because the county placed a moratorium on any new solar or wind generation until such time as their comp plan is completed. And then we'll go back and take a look at those regulations, but more than likely it will mesh fairly closely.
I guess I just can't see having a solar farm in town.
More than likely.
Close to town because if we expand the city limits, it will encompass a solar farm.
It's possible.
Okay.
Ty?
Donna, I'm glad you brought that up because sent through some of the comprehensive plan. This has got, had my mind turning a little bit about, I'd forgotten that the county's moratorium included. It's been more, the publicity on it's been a little more focused on the wind side, but the solar side I understand is part of that. What does, should, do we need to consider this sitting on second reading until that moratorium issue is because that's coming up in a couple of months? Or, or would this allow someone, does this have jurisdiction over the county's moratorium if it was in the two mile? Or how does, how do we know how that would work?
Yeah, our planning regulations, planning that the city has jurisdiction is, is the city limits and the two mile jurisdiction. So it doesn't matter what the county does because that is your planning jurisdiction and.
Yeah, like Judy said, that's why we call it the, the two mile, we call it the ETJ or the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. So the city's zoning regulations apply within that area. Even though it's not within city limits, it's within that two miles, it extends into the county. But, but that's at the end of that two mile ETJ is where our zoning regulations end and then the counties take over.
But is that a, is that awkward to have a moratorium and then all of a sudden pass something and that alters their moratorium using our, our ring?
I don't think so because you're two separate entities. So you have zoning jurisdiction within the two mile ETJ. The county has zoning jurisdiction. They can do something entirely different and it's not going to have any effect on what you pass.
Other questions or comments?
I guess I do have some more questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, because it talks about decomposition and all of this. So who's going to monitor, so if a solar farm comes in close to North Platte? And if it's not used after a certain amount of time, they're supposed to, who's going to monitor all that?
Myself and the attorney. That's who does it. And a lot of times it's self-monitoring because a neighbor will turn them in. But yes, we keep tabs on that.
And, and just as a reminder too to everyone, we're talking about proposing these as basically a conditional use. So that anything that would be proposed would have to come before city council. Any additional conditions could be placed on them. And so, you know, to Councilman Lucas's point too, I guess with anything that could correspond with the county, seeing what the county could come up with, you know, by the time that we would have any that are proposed, we don't have any at this time, but by the time that that would happen, we'd likely know more about what the county would be looking for. And all of that could be incorporated into conditions that would go along with the conditional use. So that's a big reason why Judy's proposing it that way. And why Councilman Lucas had asked to kind of, we'd had this changed a couple of council meetings ago to incorporate that so that there is more control over what could happen with them. The council has more say in, in all of that.
Donna, you had other questions?
I don't know what it was. I just don't.
Any other question?
I just can't support it.
Maybe just to follow up, I guess I'm still, I'm still probably in favor of this because I think it maybe puts our, our light on that we're open for business with a company that's, that's thinking about this. But, but that is unusual. There was an article in the Wall Street Journal, I think today or yesterday about, about churches now adding solar panels. Now that wasn't a solar farm because these, the tax credits are so lucrative. And so in my opinion, we probably, I, I guess I support passing this so we can turn that light on that we're open for business. If a company would want to relocate to this area that the tax credit, you know, is, is important to them and, or they have cultural items within their company that, 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 you know, promote this, the type of alternative energies. But I think once the county figures out what they're doing, we're probably need, need to ready to come back and look at this.
We could.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on item number five, please. Item number five is passed. Item number six, third reading in action on to adopt ordinance number four, one, eight, one to amend the city of North Platte Code of Ordinances, section 156, zero, four, two, conditional uses in an A1 transitional agricultural district to add 156, zero, four, two, A34, commercial solar conversion system, solar farms, provided the project conforms with the provisions set forth in section 156, three, one, three and section 156, two, three, seven, conditional uses in an I1 light industrial district to add E, commercial solar conversion system, solar farms, provided the project conforms to provisions set forth in section 156, three, one, three. Lane, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty, one, eighty, one. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, amending chapter 156 zoning section 156 dot zero, four, two, conditional uses, section 156 dot two, three, seven, conditional uses, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four, one, eight, one to amend the city of North Platte Code of Ordinances, section 156 point oh, four, two, conditional uses in an A1 transitional agricultural district to add 156 point oh, far, two, oh, four, two, A34, commercial solar conversion system, solar farms, provided the project conforms to the provisions set forth in sections 156 point three, one, three and section 156 point two, three, seven, conditional uses in an I1 light industrial district to add E, commercial solar conversion system, solar farms, provided the project conforms to the provisions set forth in section 156 point three, one, three on final reading.
Second.
Motion by Lucas, second by Vols. Any further discussion on item number six? Seeing none, calling the question on item number six, please. Item number six is passed. Thank you, everyone. As we reach the end of the agenda, the meeting is adjourned. Have a nice evening and we'll see you next week on November 5th.
I, I just want to say condolences to Dwight Livingston's family for the passing of his wife.
Yes, very sad. All right. Thank you, everyone.